Okay, I have six o'clock. We have C map ready to roll. Okay, great. You have six P M. And I hereby call this special meeting of the San Benito County Planning Commission to order. If we could have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Ring Hayden, please. Thank you. And the roll call, please.
District one Vincent Ring Hayden.
Present.
District two Richard Way.
Present.
District three Robert Skaglioti.
Present.
District four Robert Gibson.
Present.
District five Bobby Thomason.
Chair.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number four, the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda is the acknowledgement of the certificate of posting for the Special Planning Commission meeting. Nonetheless, are there any public comments regarding the consent agenda, either in chambers or via Zoom?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom use the race hand icon featuring by dialing star nine. We have no public comment.
Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda within the commission?
No, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda carries five zero. Normally, in a special meeting, we don't necessarily entertain comments from the public on matters that are not pertaining to the items on the agenda for the special meeting, but in the interest of completeness, I will ask if there are items from the public that are not pertaining to items that are on tonight's agenda. Do we have comment cards or people on Zoom that are wishing to comment on items that are within the purview of the planning commission but are not on tonight's agenda?
Chair, we have no public comment.
Thank you. All right, moving on to tonight's agenda, public hearing, item five dot one. Resource Management Agency review of the general plan amendment, housing element six cycle update as mandated by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Consider recommending to the Board of Supervisors accept and adopt the general plan amendment. Please proceed, Abraham.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. Good afternoon, good evening. As you're aware, the county's updated housing element covers the planning period of twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one. And tonight we will go over the different sections of the housing element update on our presentation, including the sites inventory analysis, which is located in appendix B of the housing element in the packet that you all received. As you know, in this particular sites inventory analysis is important in part because it identifies some of the locations where potentially housing can be accommodated for persons of all income levels. And by that I mean it could be planned for. And the items that we will be presenting this evening include project milestones and community engagement, housing element overview, housing element organization, sites identified to accommodate the county's regional housing needs allocations, as I just mentioned in appendix B in your packet. We will also be talking about next steps and recommendations. If you would like to ask any questions throughout the presentation, feel free to do so, or if you prefer to write them down and then just ask us at the end. That's okay as well, whichever way you prefer, Chair. In the first part of the year twenty twenty-three, the county San Benito retains the services of Kim Lee Horn Consultants for the assistance of the preparation of the housing element update, the sixth cycle. And since then, we've been working together very closely. And also since then, we've had various planning commission meetings. We've had various board supervisors meetings as well in regards to the housing element update. As you know, we've had joint planning commission and board of supervisors meetings. We've had multiple public outreach, community meetings. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. And we've also worked very closely with H C D, the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development regarding the housing element update. And as of April first, twenty twenty-five, H C D found that the county's six cycle housing element meets the statutory requirements of state housing element law, and therefore the county can now adopt the six cycle of the housing element, which is a step closer to certification. And that will be the recommendation tonight to respectfully approve a resolution of the planning commission recommending to the board of supervisors the adoption of the general plan, the general plan amendment for the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one housing element six cycle update. And with that, we'll have Kim Lee Horn's project manager, Brian Delatorre, who most of you met. He's been here before and presented regarding the housing element update, and he will be presenting more details in regards to this update. Right?
All right. Good afternoon. As Abraham mentioned, my name is Brian Delatorre with Kim Lee Horn. We're the consultant for this six cycle housing element. This document is a very large document, about three hundred pages or so. So there's a lot of slides. Bear with me. I'm going to try to be thorough, but be efficient with your time. And as Abraham mentioned, if you have any questions, feel free to chime in, or if you want to just consolidate them at the end, whatever way you all think it's best. So we're just going to go through some key milestones. So this project really kicked off in, it was more June twenty twenty-three. So this is when we executed a contract. There was a kickoff meeting with the board of supervisors and this body here. And at this point, this is where we started collecting data, analyzing data, preparing the document to be drafted. So at this point, in June twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, we were really just collecting all the data that we had and identifying if we had, if we missed anything. Move forward all the way to May twenty twenty-four. This was when the first public review draft was posted for public review. So this is the first time that you all were able to see it. The public was able to see the document. There's a consolidation of all the documents. In a second, I'll review all the community engagement that went into this project prior to that first draft. But these are just key milestones for the document itself. So after May twenty twenty-four, there was a thirty day public review period where we accepted comments from the public stakeholders. There was a large email list that we sent out. It's over a hundred stakeholders, ranging from various different organizations, groups, council members, board of supervisors, members from San Juan Batista, Hollister. We tried to be as comprehensive as possible to make sure we can, we can get valuable feedback during this time. So we submitted finally, once we got all of our public comments, we incorporated, we updated the draft with some of the feedback that this, this body gave us, that the board of supervisors gave us as well, to arrive at a draft that we were comfortable with submitting to the state. So June twenty twenty-four, we submitted to the state. About September of twenty twenty-four, we got some preliminary comments. So this wasn't a formal letter from H C D, but they were just high level comments that, hey, we realize this may be missing, or this can be improved. So we were able to update the draft prior to the end of that review cycle and update the draft, and we resubmitted. We received some comments, many iterations of this. But I do want to note that from June twenty twenty-four to approximately January twenty twenty-five, it was really just a back and forth with H C D. It's really negotiating, understanding what H C D wants, making sure we are comfortable, the county is comfortable with the draft that we're drafting. And we arrived at a draft finally in April, as Abraham mentioned, on April first of twenty twenty-five, just a couple of weeks ago. We received that substantial compliance letter. So what this letter says is the draft complies with all statutory requirements, but you can't be certified until, one, you adopt it and two, complete an implementation of the proposed reasons in the housing element. So now looking at the community engagement. So community engagement started with the kickoff in June twenty twenty-three, and then in September twenty twenty-three, we had our first workshop, which was held, I believe here. Is that right? I think it was here, and it was well attended. We had, but maybe about thirty people attend that meeting. And we got a lot of great feedback. We also had a survey that we released. So people that weren't able to attend were able to provide their feedback as well on those online feedback forms. And again, we use this email, this email list that we were reaching out to over a hundred stakeholders there. And I know staff was also calling people, letting them know, hey, the draft is available, just to make sure we can get as many people involved in the process, letting, letting people know that there's, the draft was available. So for May to twenty twenty-four was that, that public review period. So the draft was published and we had forty-five public review period before we could submit to H C D. And then in, yeah, May twenty twenty-four, we had our, April twenty twenty-four, we had our study session. It was a joint study session, planning commission, board supervisors. This is about a month before the draft was published. It was more of a notification, letting, letting you all know that what was really in the draft before it was published. And then a month later, the draft was published. We had another workshop and, and study session. And then, as you see at the very end, just a series of public review periods. And throughout this whole process, there was public review periods, periods for the public stakeholders, really anyone to provide their feedback. And all that feedback is compiled in appendix C of the housing element, which is a community engagement appendix. So one, I just want to go over, I know a lot of you have heard this a lot, but I just want to, high level, what the housing element is. So it's part of, it's an element in the general plan. It's one of the seven required elements. It's the only element that needs to be updated. So this has to be updated every eight years. And the reason we need to update is because housing market changes, just generally the market changes. And we need to update, you know, our plans to accommodate, you know, our changing need. What our housing element does is identifies our projected housing need, and it breaks it down by income categories. So there's five income categories that we'll go into in a second, but we're allocated a specific amount of units to plan for for every income category there. The plan itself provides goals, policies, and programs to achieve and be able to accommodate this need here. And again, this is the only document that has to be updated regularly, but it's special in the way that it also has to be certified. And that certification body is H C D, so it's California's Community Housing Development Department. And again, why, I'm just going to skip through this, there's a lot of notes, but just generally the, the reason we update housing elements is to accommodate our changing housing needs and really to engage the community in that plan. Some of the key features are, you know, demographic analysis. So looking at our population, our housing, how old is our housing? How much housing have we built in, you know, the last eight years? We try to take a longer snapshot just to see how we've done, you know, in the past. We evaluate our constraints. So we look at governmental constraints. That's, is our zoning code too stringent? Is it not stringent enough? We also look at just economic constraints. Is there sufficient funding, sufficient financing available for anyone who, you know, would, would like to develop in the county? But I think the biggest thing in, we look at environmental constraints as well. The biggest constraint in the county is infrastructure constraints. So that was a big part of the process, and that, that really kind of guided our site selection process, which we'll go into in a second as well. A big piece of this housing element that wasn't part of past housing elements is this concept of affirmatively furthering fair housing. So in short, affirmatively furthering fair housing is just ensuring that the, in its plans, the county is furthering the housing choice, availability, and making sure that there is no patterns of concentration of affordable housing, segregation of affordable housing, and making sure that everyone has a choice to, to housing, whatever choice they would like to select for their housing. We identify sites to accommodate our, our housing, evaluate our existing programs and our past programs. And then lastly, we have a policy program that is really the driving force of the whole program. So certified housing element, what it is, it means you comply with state law. And the reason we want to be certified is that it allows the county to be eligible for funding, key funding. So for example, here's C D B G. So C D B G is a huge part of the county's funding of programs specifically for, for housing, and that's a huge thing. And then also, when you are certified, you aren't subject to the builder's remedy. So it really protects you from being subject to builder's remedy, also gives you all full control over development patterns in the community. Some of the consequences of not having a certified housing element is limited access to state funding. So most state funding programs either are on a tiered list where you have certain criteria they have to meet. Certified housing is usually one of those. So if you have one, you have better chance of getting that funding, but also it's also a criteria to even be eligible. So having a certified housing element allows you to have that. So for example, here like the home grant, the P L A H A, C D B G, all of those have some type of requirement of a certified housing element. There's also lawsuits. So coming from private parties, coming from the state, sorry about that, coming from the state, you're, you're, you're open to lawsuits if you show that you're not being productive in the development of your housing element. Luckily, the county has been very active in this program and getting it through. So although we are past our due date, we've shown that, you know, there's been a lot of progress done. And then, of course, the builder's remedy, which many people are familiar with, it really takes a lot of the control away from, from the county, and that's what we don't want. We want to make sure that all control stays here in the county, and we have control over all of that. And then we've, I've said Rena a couple of times, but I want to define that. So Rena is our regional housing needs allocation. This is really our metrics. These are the numbers that we've been given as the county that we need to plan for. So these are a specific amount of units that are determined that, that the county and the unincorporated areas of the county must address. And all of these units are broken down by income category. These projections are projected by growth, so estimated growth and employment. So this number is, it kind of comes down from, from H C D. So H C D identifies a statewide housing need. Then they break down by region, what that need looks like. So for our county, we have the COG. So the COG would get that number from H C D, and then the COG uses their own methodology to identify how to break that down between the three jurisdictions. So between unincorporated San Benito County, City of Hollister, and City of San Juan Batista. So for this cycle, which is the sixth cycle, covers the years twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one. Our need is seven hundred and fifty-four units. And we'll, we'll see in a bit that that, that need is actually lower than our last cycle. For a variety of reasons, I think the housing market, growth, maybe the, the growth of Hollister. There, there's a lot of criteria that goes into that methodology that the COG puts in there. So it slightly decreased, and we'll see that in a bit. But I do want to show that this is the breakdown. So our total is seven hundred and fifty-four units that we must accommodate for, we must plan for. We don't have to build them. The county is not responsible for building them, but we are responsible for accommodating them, making sure there's sufficient land and, and policies zoning to accommodate this need. As we can see, it's almost evenly divided between moderate, lower income and moderate and above income. So very low income is one of the income categories. That's up to fifty percent of the median income for, for the region. So as you go up, you just see, you know, low income, one hundred and ninety-eight units, moderate income, one hundred and three units, above moderate income, two thousand, two hundred and seven units. At the very bottom, it's very small, you can't see, but the median income for the area, which we call the A M I, the area median income for a family of four, is a hundred and forty thousand. So these income categories that you see on the second to right column, that would be for a family of four. That middle column is for a family of two, and you'll kind of see, you know, what, what those income categories look like for every income category. And that, that's, you know, what we're planning for. And I just want to highlight, so from very low to moderate income, so that's really, you know, seventy-five percent of the units we're planning for. This is really who we're planning for. So it's, it's teachers and teachers assistants in the county, police officers, firefighters, healthcare support roles, county staff, retail and food employees, office and administrative staff, childcare providers, laborers, and construction, agriculture. It's really many, many people in the county. So I think that, that kind of drives the, the, the need for this plan. And not just this plan, just an overall comprehensive strategy to address the housing needs in the county. And as I alluded to before, our total need for this cycle went down by a total of eighty-three. So in the fifth cycle, our Reno was eight hundred and thirty-six, thirty-seven, and it reduced by eighty-three. The higher incomes, so moderate and above moderate decreased, but we did see an increase in the very low and low income. That kind of changes. Sometimes it's, it's for, for a reason. Sometimes we don't know. The state just kind of puts out these numbers. They do have a methodology. It's very long, very complicated. But in theory, it's supposed to reflect the, the population projections and employment projections for the next eight years. The housing element's broken down into many different sections, chapters. So chapters one through six, this is kind of the meat of the, of the plan, and chapter six specifically is our policy plan. These are actions. These are the actions that the county is taking to, to get to the need that we have. And then I've also bolded their appendix Bs. Those are candidate housing sites. These are the specific sites we've identified as being ripe for, for development. And these sites can, can accommodate our need. But of course, these are not the only sites that can develop housing. These are just some that we've identified as part of the program. Other sites can develop. It, it doesn't, you know, limit other sites from being developed. It doesn't place specific requirements for the sites that are in this housing element. They're just sites we've identified as, as having capacity. Chapters one through five, go through these quickly. So we just have an intro, just an overview of the housing element, community profile, just looking at our population demographics, our housing demographics, looking at our constraints, so environmental, governmental, infrastructure constraints, looking at housing resources. So what resources do we have available to develop housing, to provide housing for, for people, for residents, and affirmatively furthering fair housing. This is just looking at, you know, what, what is our fair housing conditions currently? Let's skip through these, looking at the policy plan. So our policy plan has five overarching goals. Many of our policies fall into these five goals. Not going to read them all. They're, they're very long, but I'll give you a second to, to read them all. I get, I get some work. Give me a second. Yeah, so there's five broad goals. All of our, our actions really fall into, in one way or another, into these five goals. Some of the changes from the fifth to the sixth cycle housing element are for programs that are continued and kind of ongoing. We either modified them or just continued them into this sixth cycle, just because they're, they're useful actions. So a lot of these are, you know, commitments to continue to pursue funding, continue to pursue grants, continue to, to, you know, coordinate with, with local jurisdictions. Those are projects that we just continued. There's others that we already completed. So for example, if there was something related to allowing emergency shelters or something like that, that was already done. So those didn't need to come back. If there was changes to, to state law, we updated the, the policies to address those changes to state law. So specifically, you know, again, emergency shelters, transitional supportive housing in response to S P thirty-five. There's, there's many different state laws that were updated since the last cycle, and a lot of our programs largely address that. In appendix A, that's where we look at our past performance. So how did we do in the fifth cycle? Were we successful in implementing our actions? Their actions have the intended, intended results? Or was there unintended consequences of our actions? So we evaluate those. And that kind of shows us, you know, maybe we need to adjust our strategy, or maybe it worked out well, you know, let's enhance these, these programs. In appendix B, which I'll go a little more into detail right now, this just identifies the sites to accommodate arena. And then C, this is just really a summary, comprehensive summary of all our community engagement efforts from the beginning of the process until today. So now I want to go into appendix B. So this is our candidate housing sites analysis. This is a, a long process that, that staff in our team really worked on, kind of tailoring. We want to make sure we're not choosing a bunch of random sites. We want to make sure that, you know, we, we have access to resources, services, transportation, if, if applicable, but specifically have either access or proximity to utilities. We didn't want to identify sites that were way far from utilities that, you know, is not reasonable to extend utilities out there because we know we have that issue of access to utilities. So that was really a big driving factor as well as, you know, environmental factors. We want to make sure it's not in a flood zone, in a fire, high fire zone. That, that really kind of guided the process, as well as the underlying zone and general plan designations. In our affordability assumptions, because we haven't had too much of In our affordability assumptions, because we haven't had too much affordable housing development in the past, we had to rely on H C D's, like, they call it their default density. So this is really a density where they see that affordable design of these developments are affordable by design. So at twenty dwelling units or acre or higher, they see that regardless of if there's any requirements, you generally see those units being a little more affordable, just because you can kind of spread the costs across more units. Our site selection was, had various criteria. So again, access to utilities, that was the big one. We wanted to utilize any county islands, so there's a lot of just small properties, some large properties within the City of Hollister. They're county, they're in the jurisdiction of the county. So it just makes sense, you know, everything around it's developed, it would make sense to add some housing there. And I believe it's one property that we identified there. And, you know, it would mesh well with all the development around it. We looked at parcel size, characteristics, so make sure that it was feasible to develop on those parcels. We identified if these parcels were vacant, if they weren't, what's the feasibility of those uses discontinuing to allow for redevelopment.
Excuse me, I have one question.
Yes.
From the last time we discussed the sites, have there been any changes? Because I'm not seeing, or I'm forgetting the one that's by Los Cuates.
So, oh, going too far. So this is the full map here. The last time we discussed, there was a parcel down in, off of like Fairview and Airline Highway in the bottom, which was requested to be removed, as well as another parcel up by like R six on this top corner. I believe there was two parcels there that were previously identified that were asked, requested to be removed. So those were also removed there. So we've only reduced the amount of sites, no new sites have been added.
Which I don't remember the name of that little street by Los Cuates, but that's not here, right?
I think it's R twelve.
Yeah, that looks like R twelve Flora, I think it's Flora Avenue.
Well, that's Flora, okay. I drive by it, but don't pay attention to the address. No, that's San, oh, we're calling it Zero San Felipe? Maybe that's why I didn't recognize it. Okay, and the Fairview? There's no address. Site five?
R five, yes.
Where, where was that?
Right here, R five there.
That's, I believe Santana Ranch, that's a pipeline project.
P two is Santana Ranch.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that said P five.
And has R five been on this list before?
Yes, so all the sites that you see here have been as part of both of our planning workshops and both of our study sessions. We had, I believe it was eighteen units to start with, we've only chipped down. We haven't added any new sites.
Okay, getting old, thank you.
Yeah.
I got a quick question.
Yeah.
R twelve.
R twelve.
Agricultural productive, that's not what he's asking about.
Yeah, well, that's the one that's by Los Cuates, the Canary.
It is in the, the general plan designation is agricultural productive. It's not used for agricultural. It's, I believe it's like a storage unit or something, but its zone is agricultural productive. And that's why we thought it isn't used as that. But yeah, its zoning currently is agricultural productive. It's not used as any agricultural use, but that's its existing zoning.
Yeah, without the addresses, it makes it challenging and the maps are.
Yeah, so I can zoom, we have a couple zoomed in ones here, so that's kind of that northwest area zoomed in a bit more. I don't know if I can zoom.
I don't remember. Page, page four oh three. Yeah, because there's Los Cuates right there.
Yeah, so this is the kind of, whoa. The county islands that we referenced here. So you'll see it's kind of like nestled, it has City of Hollister jurisdiction all around it, but it's kind of its own island there in the middle. And that agricultural productive existing designation doesn't align with that existing use. So that's also why we use it, it's very large property.
May I ask another question, please?
Of course.
R two, R five, Fairview Road, can you bring that up on the map, please?
R five there.
Pipeline projects.
Yeah, that's a Churchill.
Yeah, it's tough.
Oh, yeah, 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 look at the ambience place, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had the same issue with memory because I was, I had the same note jotted down here, which is, have we seen these before? The exact same note, yep.
And can R eight seventeen seventeen seventy Sianiga Road?
R eight, yeah, so that's down here, might be better to use this map here. R eight is really down here by Hollister High School. R seven, eight, and nine, and R one, they're really all contiguous parcels. And I believe it's San Benito runs right in the middle of them.
Oh, okay, right next, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I also want to mention that community input and your input as well went into the selection of these sites. So we identified in these sites, you know, sites that we believe were feasible, sites that we got input from. And we arrived at twelve parcels total. I believe we started at eighteen total, and we wound down to twelve.
It's been a while, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry about that, yeah. And then feel free to ask any questions, and we can go into more depth for these parcels. So yeah, so when we were analyzing our sites, our existing zoning, existing general plan, non-use designations, we realized that this capacity would either be met through identifying many, many parcels and trying to, you know, get two units here, five units here, a bunch of units here. And we just realized that that's too many sites. It wasn't, you know, one, realistic, but also it wasn't a great use of land. Just a lot of these were just kind of spread out. What we proposed was just increasing the density of strategic areas to kind of consolidate where there's already housing and where it would really make sense, and the existing infrastructure can accommodate that. So we identified twelve parcels to be rezoned, we'll zoom into them in a second. But yeah, these rezones are being proposed from a density of twenty to forty-five dwelling units per acre. So this is for all twelve of those. We ran, we haven't established the specific development standards for those, but we did run a couple of development scenarios with different development standards. And we did assume a maximum of three stories and determine that it is feasible on every one of these parcels. So this is a summary of all of our housing strategies, so including our rezones. We projected out A D U, you know, construction projections. So we identified from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-two, sorry, the total amount of A D Us that were built every year. We got the average yearly, and we projected that out for eight years. So we were able to accommodate two hundred and nineteen units via A D Us. So the usefulness of A D Us is they don't really change the character of the community. It's usually in the back or conversion of an existing unit, sorry, of an existing space, a conversion of a shed, a garage or whatnot. So we were able to create new units with space sets already there and properties that are already there. We also have these what we call pipeline projects. So those are projects that are already entitled, but just haven't pulled permits. So for example, we utilize Santana Ranch, where that project is already approved, but they haven't pulled all of their permits. So we're able to take advantage of those units, and also projects that are currently under review. And if they go continue through the process and comply with all standards, they can become a project and we can take advantage of that.
One quick question from this chart, and obviously we don't want to plan for the absolute minimum. But I can't help but be struck by the numbers here. Our R E N A allocation is seven hundred and fifty-four total. This provides us with the possibility of building, well, not building, but planning for forty-four hundred and twenty-eight. That seems like a kind of an overkill number to me. Obviously, we need to plan for more than seven hundred and fifty-four, but quadruple or more than quadruple?
Correct, correct, yeah. So in trying to address our requirement for fair housing, we didn't want to concentrate, in all of our policies, we didn't want to concentrate all the income categories to the extremely low, very low or low income. So we kind of like, per, every parcel, we kind of spread out the units per those. So you'll see that a lot of those, like above moderate income, it's more realistic that a development's going to provide more above moderate than lower income just because it is more cost prohibitive. So you'll see that there is a higher, you know, rate of above moderate. But a lot of those are within the pipeline projects. So those are already existing projects that are already approved that are providing that.
But even looking at the low and very low, you've got a six hundred and eighty-five versus one hundred and sixty-eight. So even that, that's not quadruple, but it's triple or thereabouts. So I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so it's a surplus, we have, for the low income specifically, we have a surplus of, it's a little over two hundred. So yeah, about, I think, I don't know, can't do the math off the top of my head, but yeah, surplus of about two hundred units. The reason we do that is that in case one of the parcels, say for example, that one we talked about on San Felipe Road, if it wasn't to develop, or if they were to just stay with the existing use, if that one unit or any other project was to go away, we still have a buffer. And we don't have to go back to the drawing board and identify additional sites.
Okay, and obviously, any projects have to come back to us and to the Board of Supervisors and so on and so forth. So yeah, it's not like this guarantees development, so.
It's not approved, yeah, it's not approving projects, it's not doing that, it's just really showing that there is capacity on those.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I'm looking up there and it says projected A D U construction, and then it says pipeline projects. What is considered a pipeline project? How come there's eighteen hundred and twenty-four above moderate income, above the moderate income, eight, almost two thousand? Where is that number coming from? Have these already been submitted or something you're guessing at?
Yeah, so the pipeline projects includes, pipeline projects fall into really two buckets. So it's projects that were already entitled, so think Santana Ranch, San Juan Oaks, Fairview Corners, yeah, Lands of Lee, there's, Lands of Lee is one of those, but I think a lot of those units are in San Juan Oaks, Fairview Corners, and Santana Ranch. So those are already entitled, they just haven't pulled their permits. So these are the outstanding permits that haven't been pulled. So that's really one bucket, and then there's a series of projects that are currently under review. And it's reasonable to assume that if they comply with all the standards, all the county standards, they can be granted utility access. They can be reasonably, they can develop within this eight-year cycle.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is the Lands of Lee is the last project that this commission has approved. That's why I'm asking this question, you got it up there pretty high. So you're telling me between Santana Ranch, San Juan Oaks, Lands of Lee, and Fairview Corners adds up to two thousand, almost two thousand building permits? It adds up to that much?
I believe there's nine pipeline projects. It's in appendix B, and we list out all the units and the status of the approval. So it'll say if it's approved, if they're currently under review, what the unit breakdown by income category. Off the top of my head, I don't know what table exactly it is, but it is in appendix B. Yeah, and the table, I think, is titled pipeline projects.
Do you mind if I ask a question? So can you tell me how many more houses Santana Ranch has coming down the pipeline? Because I thought I read here it was, they'd built. I can't find it now, maybe you can tell me.
Yeah, so as of just a couple of months ago, Santana Ranch is almost done with all of their single-family residences. They have less than a hundred to pull, but they have at least another hundred rental units they're going to construct, I believe. So their single-family residences are almost complete, but their rental units are going to continue on. But at the time of writing this, they had pulled less permits, that's a current update as of today.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, a quick question, please. What Santana Ranch is going to finish up building, are those going to be apartments or condominiums to finish off?
Yeah, so they've already constructed three apartment buildings, and they're going to construct three more.
Okay.
And so those last three, they're still working on.
How many units to an apartment building?
It's two are twenty, oh, I'm sorry, there's four more, two are twenty-four units and two are sixteen units.
And the ones coming, or that's the number you gave me for the?
So I misspoke earlier, there's four more being developed, two of which are going to have each twenty-four units each, two of which are each going to have sixteen units each.
So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so these are the twelve parcels that were identified as having capacity. So in the green, this is very small, I'm sorry about that, very large map, very large area we're planning for. But in the green, those are the, what we are determining are candidate sites. So these are sites that don't have any development on them, or don't have any proposals on them currently. And then in the, what is that, orange color, those are our pipeline projects. So those are either approved or in some form of review currently. So here we have the southwest area, so we'll see pipeline projects along with our candidate sites, our rezone sites. I want to put attention to R two there, that is on the top, top kind of center area. That's like that island, that another island we're referring to, so that's really a huge chunk of vacant land with existing utilities on the property that is under the county's jurisdiction. So it really makes sense, whether, you know, that gets developed as county or is, you know, eventually annexed into Hollister. It just really, it does make sense to develop there just because it is a vacant property and it's fairly large, has access, so.
Chair, I'm sorry, I apologize. The bottom right-hand corner, I think it says R three, I can't read it from here.
P three, yes.
Three, where is that at?
We're getting the number, sorry about that.
No.
I think this is the Calabria's P six.
It's the one in the yellow, I can't read it from all the way over here.
Yeah, the housing element indicates P three, Bister Calabria.
Bister Calabria, P three?
Yes.
Okay.
Is P six being replaced?
How many units does that one have? How many units is that?
One fifty-six. Yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah, got it. Yeah, so this is southwest area, then we go to the east, so that large property there, that P two, that's a pipeline project, that's Santana Ranch. Yeah, and then P five, I think we, or R five, sorry, we reviewed that earlier. Northwest, this is, we have the rest of our sites here. Yeah, and then I kind of alluded to it in a second, when it comes to like islands or really any property, if the property was to be annexed and go into the county, per the government code, there'd be really a negotiation between the county, the city, come to an agreement, and then that agreement is kind of facilitated by the council government. And then once that's done, you really just send it to H C D and show them, hey, this is the agreement we came to. H C D doesn't really care what it is, what that unit share, what that shift is, as long as both jurisdictions are on board with it. Typically, that would be a one-for-one unit. So if there were, say, for example, R four here, just for a nice round number, if there was a hundred units that were estimated to be developed there, and then the county, I'm sorry, the city annexed it, that a hundred units would be taken away from our need, so we don't have to plan for those a hundred units. And then the city would have an additional a hundred units to plan for. So that's kind of that one-for-one shift that. So that's kind of that one-for-one shift that we're referring to. And then now we're just looking at next steps. So as we mentioned earlier, on April, oh, April first of this month, we met the statutory requirements, so for all intensive purposes, the draft is done. No changes are going to be made moving forward. And the last role step is, one, to adopt, and then, two, to adopt rezones. So per Government Code Section six, five, five, eight, five, if the housing element isn't adopted within one year of the due date, rezones must be completed as a condition to being certified.
Through the chair, I have one more question. When are the rezones coming?
So the rezones, I believe, are the second item on the agenda today. So they're not being completed, they're not done, it's just, I think.
No, I think actually, because it requires an initiation, we're going to be taking that to the Board of Supervisors in May.
May twentieth.
May twentieth, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, additional questions from the commission for the consultant before we open public comment?
Nope.
Okay, is there a public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom use a raise hand icon featuring by dialing star nine. In chambers, we have Caesar Placencia, you may now approach the podium, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Caesar Placencia, I am resident of San Benito County. I'm also a union carpenter, representative for NorCal Carpenter Union. As we consider the critical general plan update, I want to strongly support the inclusion of encouragement language for developers and contractors. This isn't just about building structures and homes, it's about building a healthier and more equitable county. Encouragement language ensures we work only with companies that respect community standards, including providing healthcare for workers, paying a livable wage and supporting state-certified apprenticeship programs. These requirements strengthen our local workforce, prepare the next generation of skilled tradespeople and reduce reliance on emergency healthcare services, which ultimately saves taxpayers money. By setting this bar, we send a clear message, development in our county must reflect our values.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in chambers, we have Ruben Galván, you may now approach the podium, you have three minutes.
Good evening, planning commissioners, my name is Ruben Galván. I'm a proud representative of the NorCal Carpenters Union Local six, forty-six. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here to highlight the importance of labor standards and why I believe they must be a core part of San Benito's County General Plan. This plan will guide how our county grows and it should reflect values that prioritize working people and local communities. Strong labor standards ensure that the benefits of development are shared by those who live and work in San Benito County. By adopting language such as encourage developers and contractors to evaluate hiring local labor, hiring from or contributing to apprenticeship programs, increasing resources for labor compliance and providing living wages. You will support working people. These steps not only support a strong skilled workforce, they also build a more inclusive and sustainable economy right here in our county. This general plan is more than a planning document, it's a statement of what San Benito County stands for. Let's make sure it stands for fairness, opportunity and respect for labor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in chambers, we have Darren Clark, you may now approach the podium, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Darren Clark, I represent NorCal Carpenter's Union Local six, four, six, which proudly covers San Benito County. I'm here today to speak on the general plan you have discussed tonight. This plan will bring in many jobs to this area, and I would ask you to start considering the developers, that they hire responsible contractors, that pay area standard wages, hire locally, have apprenticeship programs and provide healthcare for themselves and their families. I ask you to keep this in mind when you're making your decisions on this general plan. Thank you for your time, appreciate you letting me speak, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Oh, I think there's one more.
It expired.
Maureen Nelson, you may now approach the podium, three minutes, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I really don't have much to add because these gentlemen just stated what I wanted to state. We need to hire local, we need to invest in our community, in our residents, put pride into the work, into our houses. It is a symbiotic relationship, it builds a community, it doesn't tear it apart. We need to continue to build upon the resources that we have, the human resources that we have, the skill sets that we have. Stop going out of county, don't go for the lowest dollar. Go for improving your residents and their opportunity to improve our county by investing in the county in homes, in buying just their groceries that they need, their clothing, putting their children into our schools, supporting the school districts. This is a symbiotic relationship that we need to build, we've got the resources here of the work crews. Use them, honor them and let them build what we need, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, anybody on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you, public comment is closed. Discussion within the commission, I do have one item. With regard to site selection, is it all or nothing? In other words, when we forward this to the Board of Supervisors, does the board have the opportunity to say, we like, we like R five, we don't like R three? Or does the board say, we like this item as a whole or we vote it down as a whole?
Yes, so the planning commission, Board of Supervisors always have a choice to change the housing element, it's not adopted. I wouldn't recommend that, just because any changes will have to go back to HCD. So as the plan stands now, it's, you know, approved, it's blessed by HCD. Any changes will need to go back to HCD, and, you know, potentially another round of comments.
Right, right, of course, I just, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I'm not hamstringing anybody by approving it as written and then saying, putting them in a situation where they can't make any changes or something, so, yeah, okay, thank you. All right, any other?
I have a question for Ariel. In your email, you said we were going to discuss some of the topics today. Are we going to discuss how we incorporate any of those things?
I think you're referring to a lot of the topics that were discussed in the public comment.
Yes.
Yeah, so we do, would recommend a policy, something very similar to what other jurisdictions have done. Our recommendation would be to put it elsewhere in the general plan. So just an idea in the land use element, because that really has a bunch of land use policies and goals in there. And that really guides all development, not just housing development. We think that'd be useful for all, really all development, not just housing. And in the rezone effort, we'll need to update the land use element anyway. So that's really another way to do it, yeah.
To what direction does staff need to work on that?
So essentially, when we reviewed it, we found that it would be better done in a different section outside of the housing element, but you could include that recommendation and we can work on it separately as part of those amendments.
Okay, thank you.
So would that be a separate recommendation to staff? That would just be by consensus, right?
We could just wrap that in with the language of the motion, I think, to add that piece.
Yeah.
And it doesn't.
It's up to you how you want to do it, you can combine them or separate them, it's up to you.
All right, so is there additional discussion then on the general plan amendment or shall we just? Call for a motion then?
I'll move to approve as recommended. With the caveat that we asked staff to make those changes in the land use element.
Can we get more specificity than those changes?
Okay, the changes regarding union labor and local labor. And the entire email, there was a lot of things in there. You can make, it's part of the record, right? That email that discussed all those things in detail.
Yes, and as we work through that general plan amendment, those drafts will be brought to the public for review and comments.
I just like to make sure we get them in there instead of not. If, you know how we do things, I just like to make sure they are there the first time we see the draft so we don't have to spend another two years working on something.
Yes, we'll make sure that the draft includes all items addressed in the email comment letter.
Can we raise those items in this forum so that we all know we're on the same page?
I haven't actually read that email yet, so I'd like to know what I'm voting on.
Shame, shame. I have a question, can we wrap into, so much labor has to be used, local labor into this resolution?
I think we, well, I would hold off on that.
Fine tune it later. This is just to get the.
Just to get staff.
Main points that were discussed in the email that. I know, we'll fine tune everything, but I just want to at least get started in the right direction.
Get staff directed to start focusing on this, right?
Because, I mean, this thing has been two years. Two long years and I can't remember, two years ago, that's part of the struggle with this.
Maybe.
Yeah, a couple of, yesterday, the day before, there was an email from.
Yeah, I had some medical stuff going on.
Okay.
That was your email? Thank you. There you go.
Thank you, I was working on trying to pull up the.
Thank you. Great email.
Encourage developers and contractors to evaluate hiring local labor, hiring from or contributing to apprenticeship programs, increasing resources for labor compliance and providing living wages.
Is that acceptable to the consent?
Absolutely.
One hundred percent.
Then that's part of the motion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wait, did you just read?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries five zero, thank you very much. Moving on to item five point two, Resource Management Agency review and adopt the attached resolution recommending the Board of Supervisors add chapter twenty-one point zero four, Local Tenant Preference, to Title twenty-one of the San Benito County Code. Can we have the presentation, please? Thank you.
All right, hello Commissioners, Stephanie Rec, Associate Planner. So as we continue to discuss how to plan for our county's housing needs, staff are here to present a new addition to Title twenty-one, the Building and Engineering Code, which is chapter twenty-one point oh four, A Local Tenant Preference. This ordinance was drafted through the Housing Policy Reform Ad-Hoc Committee, which was created by the Board of Supervisors on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The local tenant preferences established in this ordinance support access to housing for all residents and workers of the county of San Benito. So as a brief overview, the purpose of the ordinance is to remedy or mitigate potential displacement and gentrification impacts of development activities, provide an opportunity for existing San Benito County residents to afford the housing provided in the county, encourage neighborhood stability by providing a means for residents who have been active in the community to remain in the community, provide opportunities for neighborhood residents that are living in inadequate housing conditions to move into quality affordable housing units without leaving the community, and to preserve existing residents' continued ties to establish community institutions and services, including schools, after-school programs, community business, community centers and healthcare providers. So the scope of this ordinance covers projects that have four or more attached or detached units. The units are restricted as affordable housing to low, very low, moderate income, projects that receive development assistance from the county or for new construction or substantial rehabilitation, projects in which assistance was approved by the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission or the Planning Director, and any affordable units produced pursuant to the San Benito County Code Title twenty-one point oh three, the Affordable Housing Regulations. So, on to our preferences. Here's a breakdown of what's included in the ordinance. For preferences to displaced households, a displaced household means any household in which one adult member has been displaced from housing in San Benito County based on code enforcement activities, if the displacement occurred at no fault of the tenant and within one year of date of their application, involuntarily displaced due to natural disasters, if the displacement has occurred within one year prior to the date of application, homeless are spending more than six months supported by the County Home Resource Center and participating in their housing navigation, employment development and other programs, a county-sponsored or county-assisted development project, again, if the displacement has occurred within one year prior to the date of the application, and a no-fault eviction from a rental unit in San Benito County if the eviction was completed eight years or less prior to the date of the application. For preferences to neighborhood residents, a neighborhood residence means a household with one adult member whose principal place of residence on the date of application is either within the county district where the project is located or within a one-mile radius of said project. And so for preferences to San Benito County residents and workers, a San Benito County resident means any household with one member whose principal place of residence on the date of application is within the county of San Benito. A San Benito County worker means a household with one adult member who is employed by an employer, owns a business or participates in education and job training located in the county. Additional weight shall be given to residents and workers who spend more than fifty percent of their current income on rent or other household costs, have children who attend a school located within San Benito County or are agricultural employees or farm laborers. Residency must be sufficiently established by a lease agreement, a driver's license, identification card, a California vehicle registration card or a gas, electric or water bill. Example work documents include third-party documents showing applicant's primary work site is in San Benito County, that they are employed by the business such as paycheck stubs, tax returns and a signed verification form. Self-employed applicants shall provide evidence of the operation of the business located within San Benito County with local permits or licenses that are required. And so these preferences shall apply to the initial rent and sale of a project and unit for the term of affordability of that project as defined in twenty-one oh three, zero, ten, F of the San Benito County Code. That's our affordable housing regulations. And so regarding implementation, the property owner and management agent have the primary responsibility to qualify applicants under this code. However, the county may set qualification standards and verify eligibility of the preferences described. This preference policy shall be included as a term in any regulatory agreements between the county and said developer. And with regards to limitations, the preference policy shall not require owners to approve applicants who are otherwise not qualified. The preference policy shall be non-durational, there will be no minimum time period for residency or employment to qualify for the preference. The preference policy shall be applied only if and to the extent that other funding sources for projects do not prohibit the preference. And the policy shall be applied only if and to the extent that it doesn't violate applicable law. So the county administration officer or their designee is authorized to implement this policy. Right now, that is currently Abraham Prado, the Director of Planning and Building and Housing Programs Division Staff. So we will oversee this for any projects. And so staff recommend that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing today, April thirtieth, review any written and oral comment and adopt the resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors add an ordinance twenty-one oh four, Local Tenant Preference, to Title twenty-one of the San Benito County Code. Thank you.
Thank you, questions from the commission for Stephanie?
I have a lot of questions, but I'll wait till after public comment.
Other questions from the commission for staff? Okay, public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom use a raise hand icon featuring by dialing star. If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide us with your card and on Zoom use the raise hand icon featuring featured by dialing star nine. We have no comments in chambers or on Zoom.
Okay, then I guess it's time for your question.
I just have a general question. I know we've talked about local preference for years. How did this come about? Because I hadn't heard anything until I opened up the packet and was like, oh, well, this is interesting. It didn't come through the Planning Commission to work on as an ad hoc or anything, so how did this come about?
This was a direction of the Housing Policy Reform Ad-Hoc Committee that was, yes, it's a mouthful. It was appointed by the Board of Supervisors on February eleventh, twenty twenty five, and it has two supervisors on the committee. It's Supervisor Dom Zanger and Supervisor Ignacio Velazquez, with a planning department staff, so Ariel, Abraham, and myself, as well as County Council Rebecca and Sean, are working with them to coordinate some housing policy reform, of which was a recommendation to bring forward a local tenant preference, and that is here before you today.
Well, thank you for the explanation. That makes sense. I fully support local preference, but on page four of four, our page four hundred and seventy-three, then we give extra weight to several classes of people. And I'm not sure, I mean, we've we've been talking for years about local preference, and all of a sudden, well, that's cool. But then if you're one of these, you're extra special. I don't like that. Then under limitations, there's this preference policy policy shall be non-durational, so as long as you have a piece of paper that gives you a local address, all of a sudden, hey, hey, you're a local, reap the benefits. And then the other issue I have is with the twenty one point oh four point zero zero six regulations, the county administration officer. That's not the CAO?
That is the CAO.
Did he get a promotion? I thought you said it was Abraham.
So the CAO is the administers the program and their designee. Their designee is currently Abraham Prado, and Abraham's Prado's designee is currently me.
But that's not. I don't, I just don't like that. I don't think it's any of the CAO's business to promulgate rules and regulations regarding housing unless they're an expert in housing. I don't.
If you would like.
I couldn't agree with it.
If you would like to recommend, we can update it to say the Director of Planning.
I think that would be, that would make more sense to me. I mean, the CAO is running the county. I don't think that they should be getting into the weeds on housing.
And then I would like to direct County Council to respond to your question on the limitation for the non-durational preference. We went back and forth on this. We did explore a a one-year limit at least, but there are a lot of legal consequences that could possibly come about with the duration, so I'm going to pass it over to Sean.
Right, so there's federal rules. The Fair Housing Act, the Federal Fair Housing Act sort of limits that. And there's also the Privileges and Immunities Clause in the Constitution that you can't put too many limitations on people's travel, right? So people are essentially free to move from state to state or from jurisdiction to jurisdiction without limitation.
Well, that's that's all fantastic. It is splendid, but we're we're going to create this entire new ordinance to give local tenants priority, but then we say, well, you don't. One day, ooh, there you go. As long as you get a lease from somebody, all of a sudden you're a local tenant. It's seems self-defeating. I mean, to me, from a practical standpoint, why bother?
It's better than not having a local preference, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, I I I see your point, but and there will be people that will take advantage of it, but the the question I have is how many and and will it be worth worrying about? I I do think it's it's going to be an issue, but I.
Given how hot our housing market is, I think people would sell their mothers to get a unit.
Maybe, maybe.
Just me. I don't have a lot of faith in humanity. And then the the special, extra-special people, I I'm not understanding why that was.
As a, that was a recommendation from the ad hoc. They wanted to make sure we provided extra preference, very specifically to agricultural workers and farm laborers. But as a recommendation, what we could do is have them not be an extra preference and just add those items into the preferences for San Benito County residents and workers.
The board will obviously do what they want, because they're not really concerned with other people's opinions, but I don't, I don't see why we would say, well, we have a preference for locals, but if you're in one of these classes, you have a child in school, so if you're single.
So instead of where it says, like, additional weight shall be given, we can just say included in in this category of San Benito County residents and workers are individuals who spend more than fifty percent of their income, have children who attend school located within San Benito County, are agricultural employees and farm laborers, and are San Benito County workers.
Or you could you could quantify how much additional weight, too. You could also, you could also say, you know, five percent additional weight or or something like that.
In addition, we could also make them, and it would be so number one, our first preference is displaced households, then we have neighborhood residents and San Benito County workers. We could then make, you know, four is if you spend more than fifty percent of your income, five is if you have children who attend school, six is an act, so we can just add to our preferences and we can add those in and not have them be additional weight.
I'm just confused why we would run down this hole. Because then at some point, some somebody, some supervisor down the road will be wanting to get re-elected or something, will add some other category because it suits their needs and gets them some votes or some donations. So, yeah, I'd just like to get rid of the additional weight along with changing the county administrative officer to the Director of Planning and Building. And I I still don't like non-durational. I think there needs to be something there. Whether it's sixty days or six months, I mean, what, how how can it be zero?
I think we did look at other jurisdictions that did have some sort of durational requirement, and we can look to add that. That said, there's a lot of uncertainty around these rules.
Yeah.
And the farther we stretch this thing, the more likely it is to be challenged.
Oh, you know, me and lawsuits. That's why we have you on payroll. Let's get sued.
Not for that.
We had a one-year limit. Sorry, we had a one-year minimum proposed, and going back and forth with legal counsel, we decided to remove it. But the city of Santa Cruz, I believe, has a one-year durational on their limit, on their preference. So if if you like, we can add that back in to bring to the the board.
How long have they had that enacted? And have they been sued?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to get back to you.
What if we just strike sentence B altogether and don't mention the limit and don't say that there isn't one?
Will that function? I mean, I think somewhere we need to say there's a minimum period of time that you're considered. I mean, because if it's if it's this, then it's anybody, so there really is no local preference. I'd be happy with a year. If they haven't been sued, give it a shot. And if we get sued, obviously, the the court will make us adjusted.
There's also the option to make an additional factor as opposed to a minimum requirement. You know what I mean? It would give you more weight as opposed to a minimum requirement to get into the.
And that'll be part of the rules promulgated by Mr. Prado? Is that where that would factor in? Or how do we assign weight to it?
Yeah, I suppose so, yeah.
I just want to have the conversation with my fellow planning commissioners, because I just, I'm not a fan of this. Even though I'm in the process, we usually have workshops and stuff when we're working on ordinances, and this thing seems to have been brought in in the middle of the night and dropped in our laps to rubber stamp.
I I kind of agree with you. I I'm like, I don't want to be sued, but I also think that we need to be very cautious because we need to be. We've, our city has been walked on. Our workers have been walked on that live here, and I I'm not, haven't been on this very long, and I'm, this is a red flag to me.
I agree. I have a question. This housing that we're talking about, is this private people owning these these units, or is this county-owned properties, or it's not, it's not stating here. It's all you're saying is you're going to help these people with their rent. From where, from how, and why?
The scope explains that, so it would apply to any project that has four or more attached or detached units. It would apply to any unit, any new developed unit that is restricted, affordable housing, any project, any new project that receives development assistance from the county or rehabilitation assistance, any project in which that assistance was approved by the Board of Supervisors or the Planning Commission, and then any incoming project pursuant to our Affordable Housing Regulations.
So it's essentially inclusionary housing, the fifteen percent. Because we don't have money to loan to anybody, as far as I know.
Well, it seems like to me that the tenant's going to be the one calling the shots here, and I don't like that kind of stuff.
No, no, in there it says that the landlord doesn't have to. They're not forced to accept people just because they're local, as long as they don't meet all the qualifications.
I understand we need housing, but I just want to make sure that the person owning the property still has their rights when it comes if they're destroying the property, that you can get them evicted quickly.
It it does say that.
That's that's still my concern.
I wonder if we should bring this back with some additional study, maybe maybe continue this to the May meeting. But I'm trying to quantify, I'm trying to think of what changes, what what questions we would have for staff to investigate for that purpose. I agree with the business about the additional weight. I don't I'm not crazy about the additional weight clause. I'm fine with citing those four, four things as examples of reasons why you would want to provide weighting, but I'm uncomfortable with additional weight being given for those four reasons.
Cool. Can I say something?
Yeah, please.
On on letter C, agricultural employees or farm laborers, well, that's redundant. They're both the same. That that should be reworded somehow.
I don't know.
You can just leave it agricultural employee, because a farm laborer is an agricultural employee.
I think you could be an agricultural employee without being a farm laborer. I'm not sure you could be a farm laborer without being an agricultural employee, but I think you could be the opposite.
You could be the opposite, but you can't be a farm laborer and an agriculture. It is one and the same.
It's one and the same. I don't know what they're trying to say here. An agricultural employee is an agricultural employee. Farm laborer works in the agriculture.
You could be.
I don't care if you drive a tractor or hoeing weeds, you're an agricultural employee. That doesn't make any sense.
You could be a vintner and you're an agricultural employee, but you're not necessarily a farm laborer.
You're still an agricultural employee.
You're still covered by it.
Yeah, it's.
That's just kind of my thought.
It's just redundant.
It's redundant.
It's redundant, but it's it covers everything.
Yeah, I mean, if it's redundant, I don't I don't see a problem with it being there if it's redundant necessarily, but I don't know.
Any anything on the duration?
On the duration, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm fine with it. A year, you know, we could, we could make it a year and see what the what the Board of Supervisors thinks about that. The non-durational business, yeah, that's that's uncomfortable. It does seem like somebody could just establish something for the, for, just for the purpose of getting the the preference.
Yeah, just need a cell phone bill.
Yeah. I mean, heck, you could print something, print a PDF on your on your home computer.
Of course. Stephanie, when, so Commissioner Gibson had said that this has been batted around, and all of a sudden, this has just dropped on the lap. And I was like, so if that happened, when did the Board of Supervisors come and have this come about? If if that's what has happened, is that what I'm hearing?
Assuming, because this is the first I heard of it when I got the packet.
So, again, on February eleventh, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors assigned a Housing Policy Reform Ad-Hoc Committee. And and through that committee, we've met at least three times. Staff were given the direction to draft a local tenant preference. Staff worked with County Council to draft this preference, and then staff were given the direction from that ad hoc to bring this before the Planning Commission, so it is here before you today.
Was was there any public input where were Sunny or Seth involved in these discussions?
So a public input was not requested.
I'm shocked. I would like to hear from the people that are involved in the affordable housing, like Sunny or Seth, both, and and get their input before we I mean, it may not make a difference to the to the board, but I certainly don't feel comfortable recommending anything without some sort of outside ideas.
Can I make a, can I say something, please?
Please.
I make a motion that we table this until date uncertain.
Can I make a friendly amendment that we discuss the items, though, that we we definitely want changed?
Yes.
If there is a consensus to change the weight, the non-durational clause, and the change of the CAO to the Director of Planning and Building?
Yes.
Well, that friendly amendment to his motion.
Is that okay, Chip?
To make those changes before it's brought back.
This is.
So so that's a that's a motion to table this to a date uncertain.
So we would actually recommend the June regular meeting date that will give me enough time to take these recommendations back to the Housing Policy Ad-Hoc Committee and run them by then before we come back to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that include reaching out to the people?
And I will reach out to Sunny and Seth per your request and share this with them to get their input.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we invite them to that meeting tonight in June? Have them here before us?
I will, I will absolutely ask them and invite them to be here.
Thank you. I will second that motion with the friendly amendment.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No? Right here, none. Motion passes five zero. All right, we have no regular agenda tonight, so the next thing on our business tonight is a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Here, none. Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned at seven twenty-two. Thank you very much.